... Burns and Tom Hurley, also by Alex Whiteside, who is a member of our planning board, who has been very involved in the Henrys property for a number of years, our town administrator, Anne Marie Fagan, Tim Zerwinski, who's our assistant planning director and who will do the third part of the presentation, and also by Stephen Connolly and Rob Oppenheimer, who is the demolition contractor, who will be speaking to us next. So I want to thank everyone who I've just mentioned for all of their work, and for many of you in the audience who have been involved in this project over a number of years. We're, the Board of Selectmen and the Connollys have been in negotiations for the transfer of the town's land for a mixed-use development. We are not, we do not yet have a signed agreement. We believe we're very close, and we believe we'll have one very shortly. So we're going to, we're going to focus tonight mostly on demolition and on the application that's before the planning board. And I'm going to start with a little bit of background about the property. So this is a picture of the current dilapidated ice cream factory that's sitting on the property. 131 Elliott Street is the major portion of this property, and that's owned by Carrick Realty Trust. Stephen Connolly and Jerry Connolly are the principals of Carrick Realty Trust. There's a smaller piece of this property that's owned by the town, and that's been known as Zero Central Avenue, and it's at the corner of Central Avenue and the trolley tracks. The town's property consists of about 7,000 square feet plus an additional 1,200 square feet that we took by eminent domain almost two years ago. We'll go to the next slide, and you can see, from, this is an aerial view of the Henrys property. The town-owned portion is in the upper right-hand corner of the screen. The trolley tracks are the gray bar across the top. The town property, hopefully people can see it from the back of the room, is labeled, it's the upper right-hand corner, that runs along Central Avenue, and there's a middle slice in the, in between that's the property that we, no one was really sure who owned that property. We did an extensive search of the records. The information was not conclusory as to ownership, so the town took that by eminent domain. The majority of the property on the left-hand side and in the front along Elliott Street is owned by Carrick Realty Trust. The town's efforts to revitalize the Central Avenue in Milton Village Business District began more than 15 years ago. Very briefly, the Urban Land Institute, which is a very respected organization in the real estate world, was involved. They got involved and they came to Milton, they held some community meetings. There were a lot of suggestions that were made based on recommendations from the public as well as from some experts from ULI. And the recommendations were that the business district at Central Avenue, three, three buildings in that area, not only the Henrys building, but also the Fallon Building and 36 Central Avenue, which was at the time a parking lot, were subject, were properties that were believed to be eligible for an overlay zoning. So this is a business district, it's zoned commercial. Two, in 2006, town meeting enacted some zoning at the recommendation of the ULI and some town boards and committees that put an overlay zoning to allow not just commercial space in this district, but residential and commercial together, mixed development. During this time period, the town acquired Zero Central Avenue back in 2003, and the intent was really to make an investment in this area, for the town to have a say in what the ultimate development at the site would be. It was not necessarily to buy this property and make a profit on it for resale at a later date. It was really to invest and have some influence over what the business district would look like and what would happen at the area.
There was a notation of temperature warning.
There was a notation of temperature warning?
On the screen.
On the screen.
Okay. Unfortunately, we've lost our screen. I'm going to continue on with our presentation just to keep the discussion going. The Central Avenue Planned Unit Development zoning bylaw was enacted in 2006. We amended it a couple of times after that at town meeting, but it authorized the planning board to issue, issue special permits for mixed-use development at these three sites. 36 Central Avenue, which was the parking lot, that has been developed into a mixed-use development. There's commercial space on the ground floor, there are condominiums up above it, it's a four-story building. The Fallon Building was the other building, looks like we have our PowerPoint back. Fallon Building was the other building. That did not take advantage of the mixed-use zoning. That is now the Steel and Rye Restaurant and the Ravis Real Estate Office. And that leaves Henrys property as the only property that still would be eligible in this site, and really the biggest property, it's really the anchor building in the entire Central Avenue district. Going through a little bit of the history, starting around 2009, Carrick Realty Trust applied to the planning board for a special permit, and it was contingent upon the town, upon Carrick acquiring the town's property. Carrick and the Board of Selectmen at that time signed a purchase and sale agreement for the sale of the town's property. In 2012, the application for the special permit was denied by the planning board for a variety of reasons, and at different times, the parties resumed negotiations but were unable to reach an agreement. In the summer of 2014, Carrick applied to the Board of Appeals for a comprehensive permit under Chapter 40B, and that was to build a 57-unit apartment building. There would be no commercial space at that building, it would be residential only, and the proposed development did not include the town's parcel, it only included the Carrick parcels. We have a drawing here of what was presented to the Board of Appeals, and, so this would be the apartment building, and you'll notice in the upper right-hand corner behind this small building on the front of the right, that's the empty town parcel. So if, if this building were to go forward and the town were to decide what to do with its property, whether it would be a parking lot or some kind of a development, it would be next to a four- or five-story apartment building. So we think that the best thing for this, the best project for this property is one that would combine the two lots. Two years ago, working with Senator Joyce and Governor Patrick, we obtained special legislation that would authorize the transfer of the town's land to Carrick for the mixed-use development. And then we took by eminent domain the 1,200-square-foot parcel later that year. Shortly thereafter, the Board of Appeals issued a comprehensive permit for the 57-unit apartment building, and again, that has no commercial space in it, that's purely residential. The Conservation Commission issued demolition permits both to Carrick Realty and to the town, but denied Carrick's application for the construction of the apartment building. And the main reason was a lack of open space. So there was an appeal to the Mass Department of Environmental Protection filed last summer. That took a lot longer than any of us thought it would take to go through. It was not until May of this year that the Department of Environmental Protection had finally issued a final order, in that case issuing an order of conditions. So that project is fully permitted. While that was going on, in February of 2016, some of the town meeting members who were here will remember that we had a vote to amend the Planned Unit Development bylaw zoning in order to make this development possible, to make some changes to the zoning that would allow the mixed-use development to go forward. And without it, we didn't think that we would be able to get the mixed unit, the mixed-use development done. That was passed unanimously by town meeting. During the last decade or so, we've had a lot of investment in this area. And very briefly, we've had some Mass Works grants that have provided streetscape improvements, some period lighting up along Elliott Street, some curb bump outs, and other traffic calming measures. The bike path is going in right along the trolley tracks. And the 350th Anniversary Committee made a gift to the town, a very beautiful street clock, which is pictured on this slide. So with all of that investment that's been made in the district, all of the time and effort that went in by many people over many years to achieve what we think is the best use for that property, which is to combine the lots and create a mixed-use development, the selectmen are back at the table with Carrick Realty, because we really do believe that the best use of the property is to combine the parcels, and it's consistent not only with the ULI recommendation, but also with what town meeting voted for, time after time, in the original PUD zoning, in the two amendments that followed it, and again this past February at the special town meeting. Affordable housing is very important, and the comprehensive permit building would allow 57 units that would be counted towards our affordable housing index. And that's been, affordable housing has been a priority for the planning board and for the Board of Selectmen. But it's not our only priority. Another priority is preserving some commercial space in this area, because we have very little commercial space in this town to begin with, and it is a business district. We'd also like to have a little bit more green or open space on the property. So if the planning board and the Conservation Commission approve the mixed-use plan, the selectmen would then, once we reached a final agreement with the Carrick Realty, we would transfer the town's property to Carrick for the purpose of doing a mixed-use development. And our final slide is a drawing of the mixed-use development that Tim Zerwinski, our assistant planning director, will present, what has been filed with the planning board and discuss the proposal in a little bit more detail. But before we do that, we're going to talk about demolition, and we have Carrick Realty's demolition contractor, Rob Oppenheimer, is here tonight, and he's going to offer some comments, but primarily answer questions. And I'm going to start with a few questions for him, and just ask that he take a microphone so that the TV audience can hear him, and that you can hear him, and we'll open it up to questions regarding demolition. So, Rob, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Oh, you're very welcome.
If you would start, Rob, by just explaining a little bit about the demolition, how it would proceed, and then we probably want to talk about issues like noise and dust and road and control, different precautions that are taken during the demolition process to protect the neighborhood and address any concerns that residents have.
Sure. The first step would be making sure that all the utilities are disconnected, go to the Milton Billing Department, see Joe Prondak for the 100th time, talk about the project, present the demolition plan, apply for DEP notifications. I believe there's minimal remediation in the town's own property. We've completed all the abatement in the Connollys property a few years back, took all the asbestos out of the building, took all the universal waste, bulbs, ballast, mercury switches, out of the building. Pumped that parcel of property was, had about three feet of water in it. That was pumped and legally disposed of at a wastewater treatment plant. So the buildings don't pose much of a environmental hazardous waste, just a small section in the town, town's owned property building. We would follow the Connollys order of conditions from Concom, with the hay bales, whatever's in the, whatever's in the order of conditions. And I haven't, I haven't seen that, but I know they have it. Put fence around the entire site, proper signage, demolition in progress, all the regular standard protocol. We would do a pest extermination plan over there with an exterminator that we've used for quite a long time. But we would follow the town of Milton's, whatever they have for border health requirements. And then at that point, once the project is properly permitted, we would go to DPW, see what their requirements are as far as using a hydrant, putting a backflow on it, a meter, whether they supply the meter, or we have many meters that are calibrated. So plenty of dust control would be constantly used while the building was being demoed. There are some areas in the rear of the property that are probably going to have to be done by hand, between some handwork and either a large, high-reach excavator to take the building down carefully and cautiously, get it to the point that a conventional hydraulic excavator with a couple grapple, with a grapple attachment on it could handle it from that point. And the plan is, and I'll probably leave it up to one of my project superintendents as far as the, how we're going to start the demo, it's probably going to be from working down Elliott Street from the Connollys section. Excuse me. Pulling all the material in towards the cellar hall. And if we have to on Central Ave, temp fence, maybe some jersey barriers out there, do some of that work in the street, if we have to. I know that there's some talk about that parking lot. I don't know if there's, those tanks are still in place or they're not. That was an item that we want to talk about, whether we could use that parking lot or whether we couldn't use it.
Okay.
But if we don't have to, then we could take it from the street, won't be a problem.
And do you have a sense, Rob, of how many, how much time the demolition might take? Obviously, any number of factors could lengthen or shorten the time period, but is there an estimate?
Four to six weeks. And that's weather, I mean, I don't know, schedule and weather and those type of things.
Okay. All right. What we'd like to do is open it up to questions from the audience, and if we don't have an answer to your question tonight, we will make sure that we get an answer to you, we'll just take your name and your contact information. If you do come up to ask a question, if you'd please come up and use the microphone so that the TV can pick up your name and your, and your question, and just let us know your name and address. So is there anyone from the board, I should, let me start with the board, is there anyone on the board who has questions regarding the demolition? Mr. Oppenheimer needs to leave in order to attend another meeting, so he's here for a little while, but that's why we wanted to have the demolition before the presentation, Mr. Zerwinski's presentation.
And I appreciate you hearing me first, so I can make it to the next meeting.
We're very happy that you're here tonight. Thank you for coming.
You're very welcome.
Do we have questions from the board, or from planning board, or many members of the Conservation Commission? We have three members of our Conservation Commission here tonight, or from the general public? Yes, sir, if you would just come up and tell us your name and address.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Al Petrus. I'm at 36 Central Avenue, one of the mixed-use buildings. The big concern we have in the neighborhood is rodents and other pests that are in the building. I know that, you know, you have an abatement plan, but we're really concerned about rats and other things. We know that there's problems in other parts of Milton. Could you describe in a little bit more detail how you plan to control the rodents and what you plan to do to make sure that they don't escape into the neighborhood?
Good question.
Yeah. We are going to have a rodent plan in place. We will, after discussing some issues with Steve, to the extent of how excessive the rodent plant is going to be, we will have the exterminator on-site for probably the first three days of wrecking, I'm going to say, two to three days. If at that point, there's not a sighting, you know, of a rodent, at that point, he'll probably leave. If there, for some reason, becomes a sighting, we'll bring him right back. But I think the first couple of days of major demolition is usually when you'll see sightings of rodents. You won't see it two weeks into the job. When you start banging that brick building down, you'll, 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 you'll see animals at that point running away.
Do you plan to do any fumigation or baiting of traps in the building before you actually start that demolition to?
They bait the building, they put traps in the building, absolutely.
And fumigation?
And I will go over it with whoever the border health agent is in Milton, see what their protocol is, follow that to the T, and discuss with Steve if he thinks it's, it's worth doing other measures.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Helen Russell. I live at 190 Central Ave. Already, the road has quite a bit of heavy trucks that come barreling down that road, well above the speed limit. What's your plan for your equipment coming and going? Have you thought about that? And what kind of equipment do you expect on-site?
There'll be two excavators, there'll be a loader, there'll be a man lift, there'll be a high-reach excavator that can reach up, you know, well over the roof of the building. Trucking, I want to say our drivers don't, that they obey the, the speed limits, but there is plenty of material to be exported out of there. Plenty of material. So the material will be wetted as the building's coming down, as it's getting loaded into the dump trailers to take the masonry, take the combustible debris out of there. There'll be some large trailers. They're called, they're called hundred-yard walking floor demolition trailers, and they're large, they're 57 feet long.
Seen them.
Yeah.
On Central Ave. So I'm more interested in what your, I would love to see a traffic plan and a flow for where the trucks are coming from and where they're going to, and it would be helpful to know which companies you're using, so if there are any concerns that we have as neighbors and little people using the sidewalk.
Yeah. That's all going to be part of our demolition plan when we submit to the building department.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. And while this next speaker is coming into the table, I'll just mention that the, for anyone who's not familiar with the Conservation Commission process, there are demolition orders of conditions that have been issued for both the town property and the Carrick property. They have many, many conditions in them, so when Rob mentions it, he'll be following those to the T. I can assure you, they're quite detailed, and there's, there's, so there's a lot that's already been reviewed by the Conservation Commission with respect to demolition. There's several meetings already that were held on that, so there are a lot of requirements in place, and we'll have more to say as that, as this is going on.
And there'll also be, not to interrupt you, there'll also, you know, we'll have a kickoff meeting, or maybe a few kickoff meetings at the site, you know, just to make sure that our guys are following, you know, the protocol with Steve as well. So it'll, it'll be monitored, it'll be monitored daily.
And our building commissioner, Joe Prondak, will be very involved in the, in the process.
Correct.
Yes, Keith?
Hi, I'm Keith Mills. I reside at 39 Hawthorne Road in Milton, but I also have the store, Street Event, 25 Central Ave, directly across the street from the project. It's exciting, this is, it's also scares the hell out of me to be truthful with you. You know, I want to thank the town for all the support that you guys have done for us in the almost 15 years that we've been there. And, you know, frankly, you know, I guess it's time to do something, and this does provide some interesting times. You know, my concern is, is on all levels of this thing, traffic, are you going to take it down? The notion of four to six weeks of, you know, demolition, you know, kind of worries me a little bit. I know you can only do what you can do, so I guess I'm looking to you, to Steve, you know, to the board of what you can do to kind of help us out and protect us. We're a retail store, where parking is really important.
Where are you located in reference to the, to the project?
Directly across the street.
Okay.
On Central Ave.
Okay.
So if you-
The little restaurant in the corner? Or no?
No, we're at the corner of Central and Elliott.
Okay.
Little purple awning building there, the one-story building.
Okay. By the gas, on the gas station side?
Right next to the plate restaurant.
So if you look at your building, if you went right across the street on Elliott, that's where-
Okay, okay.
Right down here, Rob, across the street, right here.
Right, yeah, okay.
That's, that's where we are.
Okay. We're, we're going to try to minimize, take the building down in a cautious manner, safe manner, try to do it expeditiously as we can.
Okay.
The building components, you got brick, you have steel, you have wood, you have sheet rock, you have built-up roofing, so it does take some time to take a building down like that and keep those materials segregated, because that's the only way our disposal chain will allow us to do it. Could the building come down in a week or two? We could. There wouldn't be enough money in the budget to do it that way, though. It would just be in a big pile.
Well, I understand and respect that.
Yeah.
But my concern is, you know, again, as it's being taken down, you know, and I speak not only for myself, but all the little, you know, shops around there.
Sure.
That parking and traffic and all that stuff is very important.
Yeah.
You know, what you, what we, what the town can do in order to try to make, to mitigate the damages of people not being able to park. And I understand there's going to be machinery going in there, and-
Yeah.
At times, the road may be closed or-
Yeah.
Whatever, but-
We might do some work off-hours, if that's allowed, so that we can, when we start the building from the Connollys' side, we stay within that footprint as long as we possibly can, so that we don't inconvenience any butters. When we get to the front, on the city side, and we don't have that parking lot to use, there's no other way to take that building down but in the street. And whether we have to do it maybe, you know, on a weekend, get a couple of policemen on detail, do it at night, rent some light towers, I mean, we're going to try to be as, as accommodating as we possibly can, and make Steve's life easier, my life easier, which is going to make all the neighbors feel a little bit more comfort.
And again, I would just then just ask as, if this develops, that maybe, you know, we can talk about a little bit that, you know, that you, there's some outreach to the business community, whether it's through the selectman's office or from you all. Again, you know, if this were going down in July and August, which is the slowest time of the year in the square.
Yeah.
I may feel a little less concerned, but still always worried.
Sure.
The notion is, you know, we in retail, you know, you know, we're coming into our season where we make or break our year.
Yeah.
So the notion of this major construction, which I understand needs to take place.
Sure.
Going to be happening when my bottom line, when our bottom line, all the stores there is going to be, or has the potential of being really affected, I just want my voice to be heard, and, I mean, I realize we only can be reasonable.
Correct.
But the notion of, you know, you know, closing streets down, preventing people from parking and all this type of stuff, kind of with the notion, the hell with you guys, is what we need to do, I, I would, I really don't want that to happen, and I'm concerned about that, and I ask, you know, the town, who's always been very protective of us, to work with everybody to see if we can make this thing work okay.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and we'll work with the town, with the Connollys, try to make it as less disruptive as we possibly can.
Keith, I think on that note, I can speak for our board and say, we're committed to doing whatever we need to do to help this process along. We're working hand-in-hand with the Carrick Realty Trust, and we're viewing this really as a public-private partnership to some extent.
Okay.
It may not meet all of the qualifications for that, but this is very much, part of the property is owned by the town, and we're working cooperatively to have a good result here and to do whatever it takes during the process. And if we had, need to have some additional meetings, we can do that, or additional outreach to the business owners with the building commissioner, whatever we need to do, if there are issues, we'll, we're committed to addressing those.
Okay, again, you know, I, whatever I can do to work with you, and, you know, I don't want to be a big pain in the neck, and, you know, I just remember when we did 36 Central, you know, they almost closed the street down the week before Thanksgiving. Well, the week before Thanksgiving is one of the busiest weeks for all of us in the square, and-
Sure.
You know, we had to go and meet with, you know, the commissioner's office and everything else, and again, whatever we could do through communication, through whatever it is-
Yeah.
To try to work together as a partner on this thing is, you know, I would really advocate for.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Keith.
Okay, thank you.
Rob, along with those questions that Keith raised, our assistant town planner asked about parking on Elliott Street and Central Avenue during that four-to-six-week period of the demolition, will you need to take any of those parking spaces for the, for your vehicles or for the demolition?
If we can, and I don't know what the use of that little parking lot there is, that's going to be, if we can use it for company pickup trucks, if we can't, then, you know, the five or six guys that are working on that job, you know, there's going to be five or six pickup trucks.
Okay.
So they're, they're going to need to be parked, whether they're on Elliott or Central or up the street a little ways, you know, we're going to need to do something with those. Maybe, maybe we can limit the trucks and have a couple of guys ride together, maybe?
Well, we-
So it's one or two trucks instead of like five pickups?
We'll look into any options that we can work on to help alleviate the impact on the businesses as a result of that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Katie?
Yes, Tom?
One thing we might want to consider is, is having the, the traffic commission meet and see if there's any kind of temporary, you know, change of traffic patterns, change of parking patterns that could help the retail, you know, just shorter parking times and-
I think that's a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
So we're, we're committed to, we got more hands up, so why don't I ask-
Do you have a traffic department or a traffic officer?
We have a traffic commission, and we, yes.
Oh, okay.
So maybe, maybe we'll ask you to come into one of their meetings.
Sure.
Yes, Peter, and then we had another hand.
Good evening. Peter Mullin, 19 Gaskins Road. The property adjoins the MBTA trolley tracks. Have you had any communications with the MBTA, and what if any thing is going to, how's that going to impact your project?
Um, we, I haven't myself had talks with the MBTA. Throughout this bidding process, which was quite taxing, the town at that point- Throughout this bidding process, which was quite taxing, the town at that point was handling the MBTA permits and licensure as well as the, now that may have changed. When we bid the project previous, that's the way that it was being handled, and I actually went to a meeting out there with all the people from the MBTA at one point, but as of the last three to four weeks, no, I haven't had any discussions with the MBTA.
Peter, I can add to that, the town has had some communications through the building commissioner with the MBTA some time ago. We have not had some very recent conversations, but there have been conversations with the MBTA over time, and we'll be, now that we're, now that, we had to wait out an appeal period, we had to go through the DEP process, so now that we're back on track and this is moving along at a faster pace, we'll be, we're gonna be back in touch with the MBTA.
Back at that time, was the MBTA's view that they were gonna have to shut down the trolley and use buses?
Possibly for a short period of time, especially for the area right near the tracks on the town's property, yes.
When you say four to six weeks for the demolition project, is that actual wrecking work for four to six weeks, or is that setting the whole thing up and include the time getting ready to start wrecking?
That's the whole, setting it up, dismantling the building, trucking off the combustible debris, consolidating all the masonry debris, recycling the masonry debris, that four to six weeks is a complete project.
And how long do you-
Once it's permitted, once it's permitted.
Well, how long do you expect that it'll take to actually bring down the building, and that you'll have to have your excavators bringing the building down and trucks carting stuff away?
Three to four weeks.
And do you expect that you're gonna have to block streets during that time?
I'm gonna leave that up to one of my project managers in the office. Possibility of that, yes.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Are there any other questions for the demolition contractor after, after this one?
I'm Don Murano, I'm at thirty-six Central Avenue as well. My question is, what time of day will the demolition be taking place? There are eighteen residential units at thirty-six Central Avenue, some of them right on Central Avenue, so what time of day will the demolition be taking place?
Um, I'll work that out with Steve. I mean, our normal day is seven to three-thirty. On Saturdays, if those are allowed, it's usually nine to three-thirty, or eight to three-thirty. If something's gotta be worked a little bit differently, and we have to start a little later, whatever the Town of Milton and their protocol is, we will follow it. We won't be banging the buildings down at six AM, you know, we won't be working until seven or eight o'clock at night.
Certainly some consideration, I believe should be given to starting a little bit later during the week, seven o'clock is, is pretty early.
Yeah.
Even pushing it to eight o'clock, I think would be more reasonable. I think nine o'clock on a weekend, I think is fine, but I think seven o'clock on a weekday is quite early for the residents around the, around the property.
Okay. I mean, whatever, I don't know what the, I don't know what's in the order of conditions for construction in Milton, I don't know if it's eight to three-thirty or seven to three-thirty, you know, I'm sure something can be done, so it's not gonna impact, you know, your tenants or the residential neighborhood.
So, Rob, on that, we'll have, we'll have our building commissioner, you know, work with you on that, at least it's about hours, but-
Sure.
We're not, we're noting all of these comments as people are making, do you have other comments or questions, sir?
That's it.
Okay. One last call, anyone else for the, for Rob Oppenheimer, demolition contractor, regarding the demolition, before we get into the actual construction of the mixed-use project? Okay, then, thank you very much, Rob.
You're welcome.
We know you have another meeting to attend, so thanks for staying.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good to see you.
You too.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Tim Surwinski, who's our assistant planning director, who's going to present some information to you about the proposal that has been filed with the planning board. Tim?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, can you hear me? Great. My name's Tim Surwinski, I'm the assistant town planner, I'm going to be presenting the application that Carrick Realty Trust has presented or submitted to the planning board. Before I get started, I'll just try to find a browser, here we go. There's gonna be a public hearing on this application on September seventh, that's a Wednesday, the, oh boy, great. The planning board usually meets on a Thursday, that Thursday, the eighth, is the state primary, so the meeting has been moved to the seventh. I believe it's at seven fifteen, but you can check the town's public meeting calendar, probably starting next week, for when that public hearing is actually gonna start. What I wanted to do was bring up the town website, townofmilton.org, and when you get home, if you want to spend some time over the weekend during the coming weeks, you can view all of these application materials on the town website, once it loads up, I'll show you. It's off of the planning board site, under boards and committees right here, which is not really cooperating with me. We'll get to that in a minute. So if, if you're familiar with this project from the original application, I believe in two thousand and ten, see you later, it's substantially the same project. If you remember, and Katie mentioned this, and at the February two thousand and sixteen town meeting, there was an article to make some adjustments to the Central Avenue Plan Unit Development Zoning, which is section three J of the Milton zoning bylaw. These were, these were changes that, that really sort of made this, this, this project possible. There's been a few tweaks, but we're dealing with substantially the same application and the same setup as the last time. So what I'll say is that the site, which, we can bring up the existing conditions plan right now, is a little bit over forty-three thousand square feet, that's twenty-eight thousand, this is what it looks like, you've all seen it, this is about twenty-six, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fourteen square feet in the business district, this is the Hendry's Ice Cream Factory that we're all familiar, familiar with. There's another about sixty-three hundred square feet that is in the resident C-zone, those are, these are both owned by Carrick Realty Trust. This is the town parcel, which is about seven thousand square feet, and then this sort of nebulous area that was recently taken by eminent domain, that's about twelve hundred square feet. This is, when we refer to the site, we're referring to, this is the site, it's, it's several parcels currently under multiple ownership, but the, the idea is to convey the town-owned parcels to Carrick Realty Trust, so that it's all in, in one ownership. The project, in terms of units, it's a mixed-use project, it's gonna have thirty-eight residential units, I'm gonna bring up the, this is the second and third floor plan, these are, this is what the, most of the units are gonna look like, there are six one-bedroom units, thirty-two two-bedroom units, four of those are going to be, it's upside down, but you get the idea, four of those units are gonna be affordable units that'll count on the town's subsidized housing inventory, the, that's gonna have to be something that's discussed with the planning board during the public hearing as to which of those units are gonna be the affordable units, but that's part of the zoning, ten percent, rounded up to the next whole number, so there'll be four of those units, so thirty-eight total, six one-bedrooms, thirty-two two-bedrooms, those are no threes, no fours, no fives, no sixes, I don't think those units exist even if there were. This is the ground floor plan, the ground floor is where the, the mixed-use component of this project comes in, it's gonna be where the retail is, I'm gonna try and do this another way. The retail, and, and one of the changes from the original application from a few years ago, is the, the retail component has been scaled down a little bit, from something between seven and eight thousand square feet to a little more than thirty-eight hundred And that's right at the corner of Elliott and Central, is where this retail component's gonna be. So this is, this is the Elliott Street side that I'm pointing out with the mouse, this is the Central Ave side, this is your commercial area, and then this down here is a small courtyard, I'm gonna put up a landscape plan shortly, that'll give you a better idea of the whole site, in terms of, you know, what it looks like, the relationship between the street and the building and the commercial and the residential. It's got eleven-foot-high ceilings, that's a part of the, the zoning in section three J. The application doesn't lay out a specific business use that would be targeted, but that eleven-foot-high ceiling is in the zoning to, for there to be the possibility of a restaurant use, but again, that's a little bit of a ways down, down the line to determine what the business use actually would be, but this is your three thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet of, of commercial. Parking, which is an important issue for this project and for, for many projects in town, there's gonna be eighty-eight spaces, fifteen of those spaces are reserved for the business use, seventy-two are for residential use, there's a ratio, I believe, one space per one bedroom, a space and a half for every two-bedroom, that comes out to less than seventy-two, because there's another eighteen additional parking spaces for guests, service providers, et cetera, and then one extra for, for good measure, to have a nice even eighty-eight. And then the parking is divided into several parking areas. This is the ground floor that you're looking at, there's thirty-eight parking spaces in an enclosed, I don't want to use the term underground, because part of it's underground, part of it's at grade, but this is a sort of ground floor parking area, you can see these arrows here, this is the in-and-out off of Central Ave, so these are all numbered one through thirty-eight, there's access to the residential component through here, there's an elevator, and then there's access to the business component here. This is the ground floor, the first floor also has a, a parking area, and you're gonna have to forgive the, the flipping around of these, try not to get dizzy. That was a joke. This is, this is the, the first floor, this is what's called the upper parking garage, this is accessed, you can see the in-and-out over here, this is accessed from an outdoor parking lot, which has its access from Elliott Street, so there's ground floor parking, access from Central Ave, first floor, we'll call it parking access from Elliott Street, both an outdoor parking lot and an enclosed garage. I don't want to, like I said, I don't want to use underground, above-ground parking, because the site is sloped, so it's got an interesting topography, so there's, there's certain parts that are underground, certain parts that are at grade, certain parts that are above, but I'm gonna bring up that landscape plan, because one of the, one of the changes between the, the original application and this new application is that outdoor parking area, which I think in, in, in my technical review and with initial conversations with some of the planning board members, I think everyone considers it to be a, a pretty good improvement over the original parking lot. This is, there's twenty-two parking spaces in this sort of curved area, originally, this parking lot was more square, kind of even with the lot lines, this curve gives a little bit more of a landscaping buffer between the property owner on this side and from the, from the train tracks. Like I said, twenty-two outdoor spaces, this is the access in-and-out from, from Elliott Street, and then if you wanted to go inside the building, there'll be, there'll be the entrance here to the indoor parking spaces. One of the, one of, one of the, I believe it was a change in the zoning in February, one of the, the public amenities provided by this project is nineteen of these twenty-two outdoor spaces will be called shared parking spaces, from nine AM to six PM, nineteen of these spaces are going to be open to the public for, you know, users of, of the businesses on Central Ave, so in addition to some of the street parking on Central Ave, this'll be open from nine to six, you know, business hours for, for folks using some of those businesses, and, and again, you know, one, one of the parts of the public hearing is gonna be, how do we- Thanks, Emily. Will be how to, sort of, the signage and, and the directions for how to instruct people to use that parking lot. A few of the other amenities or public benefits that are provided by the project, because section three J does require certain public benefits, this, this courtyard over here, which is outside the business use, this is a widened sort of sidewalk area, some more landscaping along Central Ave, it's, it's tough to, to, to call it an improvement, anything would be an improvement, I think we all agree on what's there now, but it's, it's, the purpose is to make it look nice on the Central Ave side, obviously, and then this bit of open space between the courtyard and the parking lot, and then again, the landscaping, you know, that landscape buffer between the, the residential neighborhood and, and the parking lot. So this is a new landscaping plan that, again, is, is, is accessible on the Town of Milton West Side, I'm gonna see if this can, if I can maybe make this work, just to show you all how to use this. All of these documents are online, if you go to boards and committees, planning board, current projects, this is just not cooperating with me, so unfortunately, we're just not gonna be able to do it. But all of these, all of these plans are up there, the application narrative is up there, the engineering report, the traffic assessment, those are all up there, the, the engineering department in, in the Department of Public Works is currently reviewing the application for all of the engineering aspects, I've done a technical review of the project from a planning and zoning perspective, so like I said, we'll be ready to go for a September seventh public hearing. I, I would say that that would probably be the most appropriate time for sort of probing questions about the application, I can, I can, Katie, if you want me to maybe give a shot, if people have questions about the application.
Does anyone have questions? Would anyone have questions regarding either anything that I went over in the overview or anything that Tim has presented? Yes, sir.
And as I said, I'm, I'm gonna do my best, based on my knowledge of the application, but if I can't answer your question, you'll have an opportunity at the public hearing on September seventh to come in.
Okay, ju, okay, thank you. Just some preliminary items, again, my name is Al Petrus, I'm at thirty-six Central, one of the mixed-use developments in the neighborhood, and also a trustee. Two concerns that we have, number one, there is gonna be affordable housing units in the building, most, I moved to Milton five years ago, was the first resident in our building, I was appalled at the town's process for affordable housing, there was a lack of information, there was a lack of process, it took two years to put the two people into the two units in our building, and whenever we asked for information, nobody seemed to know what's going on. In the end, the, the, the application process was, I believe, outsourced to Hull for twenty-five thousand dollars. What is the town doing to take and make sure that the affordable housing process runs well? One thing of concern as a developer, our developer was on the hook for two years of property taxes, two years of condo fees, and two years of carrying costs, for something should, should have been accomplished when the building opened, having two empty units for two years for affordable housing was not something I would expect from the Town of Milton.
So what I'll say right now is, what I've got in my hand is the, the application narrative, again, this is online for everyone to look at on the planning board website, if you want to take down, section S of that application is the affordable housing section, like I said, four units, there's some provisions, the, 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 the short answer here is that this is gonna be a discussion during the public hearing between the applicant and the planning board. The application proposes a, a discussion about a regulatory agreement and a monitoring agent, sort of during the public hearing process, so I, I wasn't here for thirty-six Central, I've heard about it. I think that the town has learned a little bit more about how this process works from that project, from the Woodmere project, which I think has gone as smooth as can go so far in terms of getting those units together, but that is something that is gonna be discussed, I think, at length during the, the public hearing.
It would be nice if the pet, town had a plan to get people in there as fast as possible and advertise it so that there's the maximum number of applicants, unlike what happened at thirty-six Central. Number two, you said that the parking area on the outside from nine AM to six PM is for anybody in the neighborhood, would that include like Tino's and the wine shop, or would it just be for the businesses at zero Central, one thirty-one- Or would it just be for the businesses at Zero Central, 131 Elliott?
That is for any -- anyone coming into the business district. The uses in the building have their own parking. So there's 15 spaces that are just for them. Those 19 extra spaces, the idea behind those 19 extra spaces is that from 9:00 to 6:00, some of those spaces will be freed up from people driving to work. There is a fair amount of parking in this building. So the idea behind shared parking is that instead of building 19 extra spaces so that you have twice as many empty spaces, some of those residential spaces that would otherwise be used by people sort of park -- that's why it's 9:00 to 6:00. So the idea being that 6 o'clock, people come home and have their parking space. So those are for anyone. The business in the building has its own spaces. Those are to be shared by the neighborhood on the outside.
I'm sure that we will be commenting as an association on the public use of those because the parking behind our building was not a -- not well-executed. The information that was given from the town was incorrect, and we had lots of parking problems with people parking there, especially during snowstorms or, you know, overnight in the regular times. The only benefit we have is that Margaret moved from the neighborhood, so I know that she was incessant on monitoring parking all day, but it was a problem. And I can see the people who manage that building having plenty of parking issues unless things are truly clearly defined and communicated, not only to the police department, but also planning agencies within the town and visibly marked and enforceable.
So Mr. Petrus, thanks for those comments. I think I'll just echo what Tim said, which is that the town has gone through a number of projects now where there's been an affordable housing component. We just had one that we signed a regulatory agreement with recently regarding the St. Pius property. So as we have more of these coming online, the town and the planning department and others in Town Hall have a little bit more experience with these issues. And they're things for us to keep on the front burner for the planning board to address during the planning board process. And we certainly can learn from the experiences at 36 Central. Some of that is new to me and probably new to my colleagues, but those comments are helpful, so we'll want to make sure that we address both of them as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And as the prototype for the zoning, I can only speak for myself, but I would definitely look forward to hearing your input and your neighbors' input on that just because that was the first time the town had done this. So there are obviously lessons to be learned. So I would encourage you to come out to the public hearing and offer some comments. I think that would be extraordinarily valuable.
Other questions? Yes.
Good evening. Maggie McAviney, 19 Brooks Side Park. I just have two comments. The first one is on the Central Ave project. When they were building that, I thought there were some designated public parking spots on that building.
Are you referring to 36 Central, the existing company?
Yes, that's the first one. I don't, you know, I don't need an answer now, but they're right. It's been very confusing because I was told there was. But regarding this -- I have a horse for us, excuse me. Regarding this new project, I noticed that a lot of people questioned as far as the timeframe on the demolition. Is there a way that you could have, as contractors have a work in progress and they update you with regards to how the project is going along, that you could extend that so the public will have an idea of what's happening in the neighborhood? That we could go somewhere and see the work in progress and know what might be happening? Oh, they're demolitioning this week and -- or what's going on the next week?
That's helpful comment, so we'll take that into account.
Yes, right.
I think that's a great idea.
Perhaps come up with some ways to address that. Thank you. Other comments or questions regarding anything that's been presented? Yes. And then we'll go to Mr. McNaut. Good evening, Peter.
Peter Jackson, 14 Capen Street. I like the site plan. I think it's much improved over what was presented before. I think the parking gives, you know, a better buffer to the neighbors. Is it the intent that the open space along Elliott Street there will be open to the public? Is that going to be publicly, you know, publicly accessible open space?
Yes. Right?
The -- it will be. The people going from the parking lot will be able to pass through it. It doesn't have designated seating areas. There may be some benches.
Okay, but if there's benches or whatever, they'll be open to the public? It won't just be for the private use of the owners?
Well, there are no current benches on the site plan.
I think there should be. I think that'd be a great amenity for the neighborhood. I also have a little concern about the parking scheme for businesses. I think it's terrific to have, you know, those 16 spaces, was it, for general use of the area? I -- well, number one, you guys are going to have to monitor so that it doesn't become commuter parking, and I'm sure you'll do that. The second thing is I think that might be an attractive place to park where people using this building will tend to use that first rather than go in the parking garage because a lot of people don't. And so if the people, the 15 cars designated for that parking, the business use there, go into that parking lot, then there just won't be anything available for the others. And the ones designated for the building use might not be used. So I think, thinking a little bit about how that might work, because I know myself, if there's, you know, outdoor ground parking, I go there before I go to a parking garage. So I think users of the building might tend to do that. Just something to think about. But I think this is a much improved plan, and I look forward to it progressing.
Thank you. Mr. McNaut was next.
My name's Craig McNaut. I live at 14 Herrick Drive. Okay, yeah, but a couple of questions for us. Is the town going to file for a new notice of intent? Because this is a substantial change from what the --
They're having trouble hearing your questions.
Is the town going to file for a new notice of intent? Because this is a substantial change from what was originally filed? Number two.
Relating to construction versus demolition? Is that what you're referring to? The construction.
Construction.
Yes, it's a different project. So there'll be a new filing.
Are they going to apply?
There will -- yes, there'll have to be a new filing because the previous filing was for a different building, 57, a new apartment building. So there will be a new filing with the Conservation Commission.
What is going to happen with the water that they're going to hose down? The water to keep the dust control? Where is that going to be contained?
I wish you had raised that question, Mr. McNaut, when we had our demolition person here. We may have to get back to you on that unless there's someone who's capable of answering that question.
DPW and the Building Commission will be responsible for stormwater, you know, it would be similar to stormwater runoff that has to be contained on-site under the new permit.
In the demolition?
In the stormwater permit.
Yeah.
Because that has a construction component to it.
I believe the demolition permit issued by the Concom -- the Order of Conditions addresses those issues. I know they came up with the Conservation Commission.
It didn't. Number three, what are we going to do about the oil that's already in the ground and documented by the Rizzo report in Testwell 1 and 3?
So, Mr. McNaut, I believe those issues are addressed through the demolition permits that have already been issued.
No, they were not.
Well, there was a lot of discussion about building, bringing the building, how it was going to be demolished.
No, there was not.
What level the building was going to be brought down to.
There was none. There was none about the underground oil.
Okay, then we're going to have to consult the demolition permits that have been, the Orders of Conditions, and we'll have to get back to you. It's been over a year since we've seen those actively before the Concom. Okay, we'll have to take that question under advisement, Mr. McNaut, and get back to you on those answers to those questions. That was an issue that was discussed at some length during the Conservation Commission proceedings, and we'll have to look into that for you.
No, it was not discussed during the Conservation Commission proceedings, nor was it discussed in the appeal.
I sat through some of those Conservation Commission meetings, and I recall it being discussed. But we'll take that question under advisement, and we will have to get back to you. As I said at the beginning, there may be questions tonight that we cannot answer tonight, and we need to get back to you on.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, we're going to have to respond at a later date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just going back to an earlier question before we get our next question. I'm looking at the -- I believe that there are ornamental benches, these sort of dark little guys on the plan. This is, you see this as ornamental bench typical. So these sort of dark things appear to me to be benches. If there's -- this is something that can be further discussed and gone over during the public hearing. But I'm seeing the site plan, and I'm seeing these in this open space area, so that's up there. Sorry.
Thank you, Tim. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Frank O'Neill, 46 Columbine Road. Managing Partner for the O'Neill Central Ave LLC, which is down at Central Ave, which includes Mackey's, Tino's, Liquor Store, Coffee Break, Solowans, Orchid, and the Beauty Salon. He's been a long 15 years observing the Henry's property. I'd like to commend the Board of Selectmen, the planning board, town manager, and the Carrick family, the Connollys. It looks as though we're seeing the finish line. It looks like a win-win situation for all, which is what we need. And I encourage everybody to move forward and get this done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Good evening. John Zickwitz from the Milton Central, whatever, Milton Village Central Avenue Revitalization Committee. We had a lot of input in the previous design that was before this, and we were asked to start reviewing this plan in, oh, I guess a similar plan in 2011 before it went on hold again. So we have the opportunity to review and comment on this plan.
I -- yes, I believe through the town website. Tim, do you want to respond to that?
How would you like to be consulted?
Well, in the past, when there's been a project in this area, the developer came in, gave a presentation, we wrote comments to the Board of Selectmen, to the planning board. We were involved in the process.
That I can't answer right now, but we can get back to you with an answer soon.
Okay.
What I can tell you, Mr. Zickwitz, is I think the view of the people who've been involved in trying to put this together with the Connollys, with Alex Whiteside, the many people over the years who've been playing a part in this, it's a project that's had considerable review. Maybe leaving Thayer Nursery aside, it's probably had more review on this project than any other in very, in recent times. So we're -- what we're contemplating here, the reason we had this community meeting was to introduce the idea. It's a plan that's very similar with some changes to the parking, the reduction of the commercial space, some changes, but it's essentially the plan that's very similar to the one that went to the planning board before. We can make sure that you and your committee get copies of everything that's been filed as part of the application. And I think probably the best place to present comments that you may have would be to the planning board, although Alex Whiteside or Tim may have somewhat further thoughts on that. We're really contemplating somewhat of an expedited process. And again, the reason would be that the permits would be issued contingent upon the sale of the town land. The demolition would have to really follow all of the approvals being put in place, and then the transfer of the town land, and there's some waiting periods, and there's some appeal periods that are all built in. So we're cognizant of what Mr. Mills said, that we're coming into a holiday season before too long. We really don't want demolition to interrupt shopping season for some of the businesses. We'd like to move this along as quickly as we can. We want to have as much review and comment as possible, but we want to keep in mind that it's been such a long period of time and an awful lot of work and time and effort has gone into this project. And as much as we want to involve you and your committee, but I think the way to do that may be through providing the materials to you and asking you to come and present them at the planning board. If there is a real need to schedule something different, perhaps we can do that and have the planning director or the assistant town planner make a presentation. We want to work with your committee. It's an important group that's involved in the process. Perhaps Alex Whiteside has some other comments or ideas on that.
John, I think it's the same building, and you were intimately involved in its design. It's the same building, we just moved it further away from Central Avenue, but we didn't change the building. And you --
Well, I don't know, I haven't seen anything, so I haven't seen a plan.
Well, Tim, you should, if you see the pictures, you'll see that it is the same building. We haven't changed that.
Oh, that's good.
So your input has been factored.
John, I just made a note to shoot you an email tomorrow. We can have a discussion about what -- I said it's substantially the same project with some changes. I can point out what those differences are, and I think you'll see that it is substantially the same project.
That'd be great.
We can arrange a chat soon.
Fantastic.
That'd be very productive.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Petrus.
A hug, but we did live through this for five years. Going back to the parking and the change, first of all, this is a great plan. We think it's a great plan. We can't wait for it to happen. You've done a great job. But again, let's go back to some of the concerns. Realizing now that you have a public parking area that's not just for the businesses within the Zero Central 131 Elliott and that there's public space, that comes up with a number of concerns with the management of the building, of the ownership, the homeowner association. Who's going to be liable for the parking areas and the public areas? Insurance-wise, if something happens, 9:00 to 6:00 during the day, snow removal? Because it's not just for the benefit, like our building, and I'd be happy to answer that, ladies, questions, because we've gone back to planning many a times. And our building at 36 Central, the parking lot is for the exclusive use of the businesses at 36 Central with a right-of-way for the O'Neill folks. Here, it's public parking, so it really changes, in a sense, your liability and insurance picture. So when you're going back to your public meetings on the building, one of the things that you may want to put as a note is, how is that going to be handled, and what effect does that have? Because it could be a substantial cost for the homeowner association.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else tonight? Any comments or questions? Last call.
That was a good point.
Well, this is a community meeting, so we're not contemplating having another one of these unless there's, you know, unless there's a --